Folks here. It. Amen. Where for? Pardon me. Talking. Pardon me. Honor you. Proud of Jesus.
Amen.
Thanks, Joe. Okay, um, next, we've got the meeting minutes from the April eleventh, uh, meeting. Looks like someone's moving in. Um, is there any questions or changes for the minutes for April eleventh?
No, I didn't have any.
If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A motion passes three zero. All right, Highway Department. Chris, good morning. Before you start, I gotta have a, I got a self-confession. My wife texted me yesterday, she's, and she said it would've been good to know when they closed our road down. And I had deleted the email you sent, and I didn't pay attention to the road number, and it was our road, and she couldn't get out. So she's not very happy with her commissioner, but, um, but the notice did get sent out.
Yeah.
And, and, yeah, can you believe that?
Well, I have to have to do that. Send the emails out, and I get one.
Just glance over it.
Glance over it, yeah. Uh, project updates. Couple things here. I brought more papers than what I need. I just brought a few papers. Uh, the Montgomery Bridge Railroad Street, I got this from Rex Rock. I just had to give me a couple of updates on our project. He's a construction inspection engineer that's required through Milestone, or not Milestone, but Lockmueller. Uh, Montgomery Bridge Railroad Street was realigned east of Third Street, currently open on stone and being used. Bridge demolition has begun. Pedal removed and pier abutments removal on the north side is scheduled to begin Wednesday. Uh, hoping to begin piling on the north side next week. South side piling currently delayed due to CSX overhead power lines in the way. Uh, the power lines are currently scheduled to be out of service from five four twenty-three and five seventeen twenty-three. Uh, bridge should still be on schedule for, uh, end of October completion. That's a date on the bridge where we're at. I don't know if you guys see that. I know the, the Larrive media page has got a drum footage of the bridge, so.
Yeah, I was there last night, and so, yeah. It's coming down.
Coming down again. So that, that overhead line, is that the same overhead line we dealt with here on this bridge?
Yes, the signal line.
The signal line that they don't use anymore?
Yes.
See if we would just cut it.
Would've just been done. All right, did we, we end up putting that back here at Washington or not?
Uh, they buried it.
Buried it, yeah.
Okay.
They're planning on burying this one, too.
Okay.
It just takes a, things move a little slower.
I guess.
Uh, Kennelburg Road, I got a little update on that. So there's not much happening this year, but the, the contractor still has some work to do to finish the ditches on the back slopes. Has to get grass growing everywhere. Uh, once they do the ditch work, work on the back slopes, then a pre-final inspection take place. That's where we'll, the county will go alongside the Milestone, Lockmueller, and then we'll see if everything's done and everybody's happy with the grass. If it is, then we'll get a, a notice of termination. And the final plant completion date for acceptance is six thirty twenty-three. That's when it's supposed to be final. I know the road was open several months ago and we had a rhythm cutting. And now we're gonna be walking through and making sure that residents are happy, the grass is growing, the ditches are flowing, cullards aren't plugged up. But we've got a couple of people calling in with some concerns. They're addressing. The contractor.
Oh, it's on his, yeah.
Hey, um, one of the things I need to bring up, I guess, to see if it's all right with you guys. We had, uh, got our community crossings matching grant fund, twenty twenty-three dash one. Uh, we got our award letter to Mr. Nathan. That is, uh, the Indiana Department of Transportation has completed the review selection of projects for funding. The twenty twenty-three dash one community crossings matching grant fund program, your community has preliminary been awarded. Community crossings matching grant funds based upon estimates of the following. So we submitted two roads. They both were accepted, and the, the funds were nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty-five cents.
They got an odd number in there. I like seeing a car.
The roads. Or, I was gonna read all that, but I don't read. Uh, nine hundred east north of, of Odin from the corporation line north to, uh, the county line. Basically connects north of Odin to the Newbury Road. That road goes east to two thirty-one and west to fifty-seven.
Yeah.
Has like nine hundred and seventy-one cars a day on it. And so, chose to do that road. So then everything on nine hundred east from Montgomery all the way up to the county line would be basically newly paved. We did twelve hundred north, nine hundred east, heading east to two thirty-one. That used to be Old Highway fifty-eight, and it's got like six hundred and sixty-one cars a day on it. Um, we'd like to widen it a little bit, the narrow road. And then when Odin starts their construction of, I can't think what they call the road, the nine hundred east. Their section there, they had to give traffic away in north, and take twelve hundred and, you know, we either repay that, update that. There's a bridge on there that we've gotta redo. So that'd give people a way around all that construction, and open stuff for the block. What we were, we were hoping to do.
Which construction season will this be next year?
Well, that's another thing on this. Hopefully this year, but it could be.
Oh, you think?
Could be next year. We're, we need to put it out for bid.
Okay.
That's part of the CCMG, to put it out, out the bids for contractors. If we were wanting to put that out like Monday, and then accept bids on the twenty-third of this month? Move.
Well, we can move that. Actually, we're gonna talk about that, and actually, let's go and talk about it now. Um, if it's okay with you, we haven't heard back yet regarding the off-site meeting. So on the May twenty-third meeting, since we're gonna have these asphalt bids coming back in, uh, let's go and just have that meeting here as normal. And then we'll just have an off-site meeting at another time.
That would work better for us, isn't it, Wayne?
I think we're, I don't think there's any reference for, for us, so.
As long as we have a meeting sometime in the year, yeah.
Okay, so we'll change that Board of Commissioners meeting back to the Commissioner's room on May twenty-third at nine AM. Okay.
Chris, on the nine, I mean, the twelve hundred north project, you said you gotta widen that road. Is the county gonna widen the road first before the project, or is it, is that part of the project or not?
It's not part of the project.
Is it currently, what, tw- twenty foot?
No, it's eighteen.
I know it's narrow. There is, there's a lot of truck traffic on that road. I know Stahl Brothers uses it, and a lot of people use it out there.
There's, there's a couple of sections that are twenty, and there's a couple of sections that's eighteen, so we wanna make it as a all the way through.
Twenty foot or wider than twenty?
Twenty foot.
Okay.
We wanna, we, we like to get our blacktop roads at twenty.
Yeah.
Some of our gypsum roads are eighteen foot. Got a couple sixteen foot. Not real busy roads, but they're worth it. Yeah. Um, and I guess that would probably the, kinda, I have a couple of questions to ask for the meeting. But, sort of, the, I get confused on the, the match monies for the highway construction project. For us to, to pay that out for the match for the CC. So we've got, we've got highway construction projects, five hundred thousand in county match monies.
Yeah, let's just do, in, in my head, I may be oversimplifying it. Anytime we get a matching grant, uh, like we always had for the construction of Odin Kennelburg Road, we had that matching account.
Monies, yeah.
So let's use that, because the other account we can use for anything. So if we run out of matching money, we can always dip down in the other account, but we can't do the opposite.
I know you guys have a big construction project.
Yeah.
You're known with that.
Still got a healthy balance there. It's on the last page. There, wait, second last page, second last page.
Yeah, so, um, let's use the county match money, 'cause obviously this is a match, and then we can always go dip down into highway construction for any projects. Okay, that's count four, three, three, zero, zero.
We've got all the money's paid, I mean, everything's paid. Just got some LPA vouchers left on, on the Kennelburg Road, right?
Right. And then I think, uh, I believe our, our county cost on the CCMG grant, it would be three hundred, I'm gonna round it up, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, and we'll be doing roughly eight mile road.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's great.
So that's what we got with that. Uh, another one, I've gotta send a invoice to the NDO to relieve. On May first, I need to send them an invoice. You heard me. I've got that prepared. You guys don't need to sign it, I just want
Were they full-time?
Send that out to them.
Yes.
Invoice, invoice Rusty Dollar for that. Part of the, the deal. Thirty-six days or something like that, after we invoice in ownership of that. Responsibility of everything.
I'd keep, I would like to keep those monies allocated to that road.
Well, I think that's gonna be imperative. Um, it's, I know Lockmueller's working on some design options for the, um, intersection out there. Just to see, NDO had talked about it roundabout, but it's, in, in my, in my civil engineering opinion, it's not a three million dollar problem, which is what a roundabout would cause.
It's the road that definitely needs to be realigned to get to the intersection.
We're thinking, we're thinking of realigning, make it perpendicular, and, uh.
It was like a three point five million dollar.
Yeah, that's, 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 that's crazy. If we could just realign that road, even if the county could do it, and, you know, get it realigned, so we're perpendicular to fifty there when we get there.
Yeah, we'll keep you posted as we get emails from Lockmueller on that project. We'll keep you guys in the loop.
We'll send that out, yeah. Then I've gotta send the, oh, the interlocal ring. In Washington. Their contribution. I'm gonna send that, uh, invoice out to the NDO. That's another stuff. You know? Makes me nervous. We've got a meeting with Laura Slusher. Coming down to talk about, uh, couple turns, County Road two hundred north and six fifty east. Couple accidents there, so we're for recommendations, valuing the area. County Road two forty west, Oak Grove Road, and Oak Grove Drive there, that T that's, and then I think the cemetery entrances.
Yeah.
Straight to the west, the path. Look at that, I'm out. I think, one of you guys, I think was wrong, you gotta replace.
Yeah, I mean, I'd mentioned a couple of years ago, you got two perpendicular traffic flows, and neither one has a stop sign.
Yeah, there's no, not enough control.
But there's not that many wrecks out there, so, I mean, they're figuring it out.
That's low speed, but it's still there.
A little strange.
I think
If something were to happen, we'd be dragged into it.
I think so, yeah.
Uh, you know, even though that cemetery road is straight on, that doesn't give you a right way to access private driving. But we're gonna look at it. As it requested it. And then we're gonna look at the one old US fifty. Anything comes up, you guys, you can text me and we'll
On the two hundred north and six fifty east intersection, are accidents out there now, right now, happening?
There was one just recently. I think the boy was hurt pretty bad.
I guess, 'cause we got through, through asphalt all the way to nine hundred now, I guess people are using that road more.
Yeah. That road a little bit more, and six fifties pretty fast, and there's
Yeah.
curbs through there.
Supposed to be forty mile an hour down through, forty-five or forty down through there on two hundred north, right? Yeah.
So, uh, there's been a couple accidents, and we've had some that we're, we're gonna look into, see if there's anything we can help with. Uh, I was gonna let you guys know, we did reach out to Solomon County. Customer, uh, Tornado came up. That took a message. Hot to Scott Myers, our EMA director, too. He reached out to him and offered. As of right now, they haven't needed it. And I think they had overwhelming volunteers.
Yeah, which is good, yeah.
Coming out of woodworks. Um, what we're getting ready to start doing is our dust control applications, that we took applications from March first to May second. And then in May, we will rock and prep the areas. In June, we'll apply our oil. Uh, we're also starting the fabric, the roads that we tiled last year, been collecting the wide ways, wide ways on them. So we're starting to put, uh, fabric and rock and calcium down. That's the first step. We do that in May and June. And then we'll actually put the hard coat, the chipping on it, by August, we'll let it set, it will be after we do that. In June and July, we'll start our yearly maintenance, our chipping roads, our fifteen roads. In July and August, we'll tile. Sold the compactor.
There we go.
Twenty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. Sold you guys that. So we sold that. We'd like to, maybe use that money to start pursuing We used the compactor like one time.
Yeah.
Fill the road. We did get a, a five or seven thousand dollars.
That little money on there, but you had, you had to put tires and wheels on, yeah.
But we didn't use it, so we went ahead and sold that. Uh, I did reach out to get a update on the Billings Mine, uh, but I haven't got anything there. I think I forwarded Nathan a little link to Shamrock Mine in DuBois County. I think they got that facilitated now. Trying to do what they can with the money they have. I don't know that they're gonna be able to put their road back, but they're gonna do that, so they told us after Shamrock Mine, we would be there.
Excellent.
So I reached out, and I haven't heard nothing yet. Uh, Wes Boggs, the use of the excavator, they had requested to use our excavator, and actually, one of my dump trucks had carried out this old office or old house that's up there on two thirty-one. Typically granted county, under agencies, or equipment.
Right.
As long as it had an account.
Operator running it, yeah.
That was requested to me. Bills, the president, he sent the email. Twenty mile an hour.
I've never had any issue doing that.
No, it's always been something. To me, they're a county department, basically, I mean, so it's, I've always been okay letting other county entities use county property, so.
It will be a county employee operating and not, not Phil.
Yeah, I think that it needs to be a current county employee, operating machine.
Which is the way it's always been in the past. Even like when we, but, uh, Black River, we use our roller and stuff, it's always a county employee running it, and even, even out here, Turkey tried the same way, whatever they've asked for.
Phil had mentioned he would do it, but he's not a county employee.
Yeah, I think we need to have a county employee running the, with the.
We volunteered to do that. Have our, one of our guys do it.
Yeah.
Um, if they wanna do it on a volunteer basis, I'm probably able, we're not using the machine, that next month when we go, or get that.
I don't, I don't have any issues at all.
Yeah.
Probably need to make a motion on that, probably.
Yeah, entertain a motion to allow Wes Boggs to use the, um,
Escavator and Dump Truck.
Escavator and Dump Truck, and then we'll supply the
Manpower.
Manpower.
Still moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A motion passes three zero.
And I don't think I have anything else. Phil's probably got something to say. Talk about my concern. I've got, any corrections, parking lot?
Oh.
Yeah, he might just stick around for a few minutes. We'll see how quickly we get down to him, so. All right, thanks, Chris. Okay, next up, we got the Davies County Assessor, Crystal. Good morning, Crystal.
Morning.
Got a contract for cyclical reassessment of real property. Uh, you had any questions? I think we, we received this a week or so ago. You reviewed it. Okay. Any questions or anything, gentlemen?
I don't.
No, I'd
Great forward.
I'd entertain a motion to approve the contract, I believe, was with Nexus.
Yep. So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A motion passes three zero. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next up, um, we've got the three-year maintenance agreement for the plot wave scanner, Rosetta. Hi, good morning.
Morning.
It looks like we've got a, um, proposal here in the total amount of twelve thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars, uh, for the Okay. Great, yes, I see the credit, eight hundred and ten dollars, so. Very great. So this is a three-year, uh, comprehensive maintenance agreement, two different agreements, um, on a book eye and then on the plot wave.
Okay.
Sure. Okay. Great.
Pulled up here.
I don't have any issue with it.
Any questions? And if, um, there's not any questions, I'd entertain a motion to approve, um, both.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A motion passes three zero.
Thanks, Rosetta.
Thanks, Rosetta. Next up, we got the Community Corrections Grant, um, Laura Patty. Morning, Laura.
Morning.
So Laura, does the grant, does this come from the state or the federal level?
State.
State level.
Yeah.
Okay. Gentlemen, are there any questions?
Yeah, looks like the total's two twenty-five, is that right?
Three fourteen, eight forty, so.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
I don't have any more questions.
The cover sheet says three hundred and fourteen, eight forty.
So it's a reimbursable grant of three fourteen, eight forty, starting January of twenty-four through December of twenty-four. Is that right? What it says on this cover sheet.
It's got it in the, seven twenty-six and two twenty-five.
Uh, I can just fill in the correct numbers. Like, what is the, uh, total amount for the grant? And, and that's the, that's the total?
Yeah, man.
Okay.
One to seven twenty-six, seven hundred and twenty-six thousand, thirty dollars, and the other one's
Okay.
Two twenty-five.
Okay, that starts on the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
That ends on
It starts January one.
Twelve thirty-one.
Yeah. I'll, I'll just resubmit that.
No, no worries. I'll just make the changes on here, so we can keep, we can keep it moving forward for you.
I appreciate that.
Worries, no worries. Um, not bad for your first time, so that was an easy.
Of course, there was something.
It's an easy, easy fix.
That's an easy fix, right?
Gentlemen, are there any questions?
No, I'll make a motion to approve.
Yeah, um, motion.
Oh, you know what? I am wrong.
Sure.
I am wrong. That is the correct number.
Okay.
That's the total between the two. That's the total between the grant and project income.
Okay.
I was looking at both those numbers. So if you go to like this sheet, that looks like this on both of those.
Yeah.
If you go to just the grant column, in the very first column.
Right.
And add those two numbers up. That is how I came up with that number, so that is correct. I apologize.
Okay.
So the number is supposed to
So it was, yes. That is the total between the two.
Yeah.
Okay.
But the grant, it's just that three hundred something thousand.
Got it, got it.
Oh, okay, it just clicked. Oh, I apologize.
You were right, you were right after.
So I was right, thank you.
Scratch it back out.
So sorry.
So if you don't get the grant, you cut back on services?
If, if we don't get the grant, which we will get the grant, I'm not, I'm, I'm worried about that we won't get what I asked for. I don't think, I'm wondering if we'll get what we got last year, which I think was like two hundred and ninety thousand something, um, because I added this in this new position. I'm, I'm afraid they won't give us that extra. And if we don't get that, then I can't hire a new case manager.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I'd entertain a motion in the amount of three hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars, Grant.
So moved.
Say, uh, motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes three zero.
And then I'm, I think I'm next again.
Yep.
And this was, I had emailed yesterday, 'cause I just found out that I did have somebody to, uh, point to our board for the victim spot that we've been needing to fill ever since David Gray left that. And I think that's been almost two years.
Been a while.
That it's been open. Um,
It's like Mr. Stillman buying coffee for everybody.
I had returned it all.
Much appreciated.
Um, so I'd like to, and I've talked to her, it's Julie Berry. Um, she was the victim of a crime. It's probably been about fifteen years ago, and she's, she worked at our department before she's in her nine-one-one director role. She knows how our program works, she knows how it operates, and I just felt like it was a really good fit.
Should be great, yeah. I'd entertain a motion to appoint Julie Berry to the Community Corrections Board.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner A motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favors, aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
Right, thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
And then I'll have Joe talk about, I'll have him switch me, have him talk about the, um.
Sure, Joe, come on up, we'll talk about the parking lot. Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah. Thanks, Joe.
Good morning, guys.
Good morning, Joe.
Okay, you're to your left. That's on the high level.
Go on there, a few weeks ago, I sent Nathan what I was wanting to do to our parking lot, it needs a little attention. Through the weeks, sometimes we have, uh, twenty to thirty cars in there at one time, because we're offering classes, and then sometimes if clients come in for different case managers, um, and it can fill up our lot pretty full, along with our staff. So, what I've been wanting to do in the past, and I've talked to Scott Schnare about it in the past, is renovate the parking lot, as you can tell, it would be gravel, and, so I already reached out to Chris and Rich at the County Highway, and they were on board to, 'cause they've done some work for us before, as far as spreading some rock and just kind of cleaning it up a little bit. 'Cause after wear and tear through the years, it does, you know, the gravel starts to move around, leave ruts, so what we wanted to do is extend it a little bit to the east, then come up a little bit on the north, where we would add some more parking up by the sign, because some people just park there regardless right now, but I thought if we can add a little more gravel, put some curbs, and, and then I reached out and sent the quote that Rich had given me for, uh, the rock, because that's all we're really in for, is the gravel, because I was already given the okay for the, uh, the, the grader and, and whatever else you might need, so, and the manpower. And you'll let me use that, I can use all the equipment, and I think he's gonna let me use all the, all the equipment on our lot.
And try it all at the same time.
So there will not be any buildings left.
So you're running a big parking lot.
Yeah, we're looking for it, yes, sir, and then, this'll open up some, 'cause Luis is having, on the nineteenth, he's having a rooted, is it, uh? So we're gonna have vendors and, and different, um, agencies on our lot, so, uh, we, we would need more space for that, and to make it look a little cleaner, because then, as you saw in the email I sent, I talked to Mr. Seal that owns the property, because we've been renting for him for the last five years. He gave me the, he'd like to sit down and possibly talk about us purchasing that lot, so the county can buy that lot here soon, maybe within the next year, because all he's doing, he gave me the okay to do whatever I want on it, so, if I wanted to gravel the whole thing, he said I could, but that would look a little odd.
Yeah, if you want to get some sort of, um, number or purchase price from him, and then we can set those wheels in motion, so we can evaluate.
Get appraisals and stuff too.
Yeah, okay. Yes. Depends, depends, are you gonna be helpful?
Is your phone gonna go off? I know.
Okay.
Well, on this one, and I have, this one, I'm just adding a couple more spots, so it's not like I'm, um.
Yeah, so let's go and bring John in and see, I mean, if, if we need to eliminate two spots and not have to pave it, then.
Yeah.
Then that's what we'll need to do.
Because ultimately, our, our big plan i- is if we do own that property, I mean.
Yeah.
We would redesign the whole thing anyway, with the building and, and pro- parking, so this is just me needing some more spots.
And, and if we see that, that we're gonna, if we see Community Corrections is gonna be there long-term, I mean, paving that parking lot definitely would not be out of, out of question for us.
But we don't wanna do it where it's permanent, because we don't know how long those buildings are gonna be, so the layout.
Exactly.
Be much different, so, but, uh, Mr. Spillman's right, that there is a new ordinance, 'cause I talked to the, the street commissioners and.
Okay.
And they gave me, but I will talk to John Casper today, and, and we'll see.
Uh, how much gravel are we talking about? Um, it's, it's not gonna be a ton.
It was like eleven hundred dollars.
Yeah, eleven hundred dollars worth of gravel, so.
No, I didn't, uh, Rich figured it out.
Back to gravel, right, it has ways spreading out on its own.
You know what, if the wind blows it, I mean, no, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, talk to John.
Thanks, Don.
They dumped it in the wrong place.
Yeah, talk to John, and then just working with Chris, um, are there, is there any op- opposition?
No, get, get.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion.
I guess, I guess, who's paying for the rocks, the commissioners paying for the rocks?
Commissioners.
Commissioners, somebody just needed to, need to know where that's coming from.
Commissioners will pay for the, the gravel.
Yeah.
Out of the projects fund.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
And then we could, and then you guys can make the, every college motion to give me permission to.
Yeah, so I'd entertain a motion to cover the cost of the, of the gravel, all the projects fund, and then just authorize Chris to work in conjunction with Joe to do this legally, according to.
When I do get ahold of, uh, John Casper, can I shoot you guys an email just letting them know?
Just send it to Chris.
Great.
He's got the, if it's green, go, you don't need to involve us.
Perfect.
Hit it before the nineteen?
So, okay, I'd entertain that motion.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. All right, thanks, Joe.
Thank you, guys.
And next up, we got the Veal Fire Board, we have a member that's gonna be retiring off that board.
Thanks, Chris.
Uh, the Fire Board's simply.
You could go ahead and introduce yourself, just for the.
Bob Armstrong, president of Veal Fire Board, we're asking for a simple change, we have, we have a member that wants off the board because of health reasons, so we ask that he be replaced with, uh, Mr. Robert Wildman.
Great, um, that's, any questions, concerns?
Mr. Wildman's a good man.
Uh, the only thing we'd request is gets a cell phone, uh, information, so that during the reappointment time period, the commissioners have contact information.
I think the auditor has most of it.
Got it.
You did get it, awesome. Uh, if there's no further questions, I'd entertain a motion to accept the resignation of, um.
Richard Kane.
Richard Kane, and, and to appoint Robert Wildman in his place.
So moved.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time today. Okay, next up's, uh, Wes Boggs' AED request, um, we had purchased an AED, uh, device for a couple of different departments, so Wes Boggs, um, had reached out and seeking, um, a similar device, since they are a, uh, county, uh, department. Uh, they had requested to, I, I, and I pushed back and said we'd cover one, and then perhaps they can cover the other costs.
Or Mark, or somebody.
And I know they have a larger campus, but, um, you know, we definitely.
They gotta put these in vehicles, or in a?
I didn't get that, that, uh, linear with them, um, where they're gonna actually put it at, but, um, I think we got one in the help, or highway department.
Right.
Community Corrections, I believe, I can't remember, um, so, so they're wanting one device with Wes.
Why wouldn't they buy it on their own?
Well, I think that they saw that we bought some for the, some of the other departments, and so therefore being, why didn't the other two buy them on their own?
I don't find. They've always prided themselves on really not costing taxpayers anything, they were self-sufficient.
Mm-hmm.
But I can have a lot of things self-sufficient if I have somebody else pay for everything.
I don't have any problem.
One way or the other, but.
Yeah, I, I, if they requested two, I don't have any problem paying for one, but somebody else has to pay for the second one.
Yeah, it's okay if one, I mean, we helped with the roads, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a public, um, piece of infrastructure, um.
Well, I, I have no issue with it, I'm.
Yeah, yeah.
Tell me that they're self-sufficient when they're really not.
So, if there's no, um, opposition to one, I'd entertain a motion, and then we can pay for that, um, at the same time we paid for this other.
Yes, we've, we've accounted for that.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Okay, next up, we've got the SRI, uh, tax sale, uh, agreement, addendum.
That's between, uh, with the Treasurer's Office and the Auditor's Office, when we go to do our tax sales, this is just a service fee that has increased due to everything else that, um, and it's just went from a hundred dollars to a hundred and twenty-five, so we just need the paperwork to be completed.
Any questions on that? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the increase to one hundred and twenty-five dollars.
So moved.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Okay, um, next up's the Visitors Commission update, Grant, I'm not sure if this is the ordinance, or?
I, I think still just an update, and, um, I think at the last meeting, we talked about having, uh, an ordinance ready to go, it'll, it's something that'll need to be approved by both the council and the commissioners, um, in the uniform, uh, in keepers' tax state code sections, there's references to both the fiscal body and the executive body. And, uh, at this point, the Visitors Commission has returned all funds to the Auditor's Office, um, my request on the ordinance would just be to reflect what we would like to have different from that uniform ordinance. Um, I've sent a draft out to you all, I know that there were some comments about that, um, there's two funds that I've been told that would hold these, these monies now, eleven twenty-seven, and then there's a, a local fund that was requested to hold the one and a half percent. Um, I know there were some comments about that, and I didn't know if now's a good time to talk about it.
When they were going through that, the ordinance originally had sectioned out a ha- one and a half percent for a convention center.
I think the resolution, I didn't see it in the original ordinance.
Legally, I don't think you can do that, but you said it was just part of the resolution?
It was in, it was in a resolution when it went up to nine percent, yeah.
But what I've been told is we, they can't dictate to the Visitors Bureau how to spend that money, they can control it through the budget, but it can't be documented, we're saying that they take that money and do that.
That's on one and a half percent?
Yes, the way I understand it, I could be wrong, but, oh, that was the discussion, that, and for years, it's been wrong, because when it was first put in place, they had so much going to the museum, so much going to the development corporation, or the growth council, and then the chamber.
So, there'll have to be council action if we've got more than one fund, we've got one fund now, or do we have two?
Um, with the new fund that was, that we've created to put that one and a half percent in, based off of the documents that we had currently, um, that is a local self-fund that we have, um, put that aside for, so, I can reach out and get some verifications on all that, to, but, if we keep it within the same fund, at the end of our budget cycles, everything gets into the, uh, the cash of that fund, so, we need to keep something separated out, I'll have to get with State Board on how.
What's your preference, or what, 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 something you want from council or commissioners?
Let me verify with the State Board of Accounts on, on it first, before we make a decision.
Now, I don't, I personally don't think there needs to be a separate fund, it has to be budgeted, it just accumulate in the main fund, but I'll leave that up to Jim, and you to decide.
We've got a draft out there, uh, again, it's, it's not ready for approval today, but, um, if there's any comments, I think we've made quite a bit of progress over the last couple months on that topic, if there's any other comments on it.
No.
Got a new, got a new president of the commission?
Yes, uh, Tony Duncan, myself, and Darren Holder, the met with, um, them, um, last week, um, we're, uh, assisting in a few different ways, and, uh, we'll be meeting with them again on Wednesday to, um, continue to, um, move forward, so.
Who's the new president?
Uh, Natalie Smith.
Okay.
So, and more, more, uh, to be, more, more to be done, so. Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay. Uh, next up, we got the courthouse renovations, ladies. How are you?
Morning.
Good.
Good.
I am Rebecca Dixon, RQAW, and we also have with us today Lara Dawson, and Whitney Drimmann, who's heading up the interiors for the courthouse, um, and, today, what we wanna do is we wanna give you an update of activities since we last met, this is our second out of three meetings during the design development phase, um, you have, should have a schedule of design development activities, next week, we'll be, uh, convening the security meeting, um, Jennifer's.
Give that schedule, did you, did you pass that out with us, or?
Um, I know, but I, you got my copy.
If that's okay, I don't wanna.
Oh, okay.
You keep it, and I can get something emailed.
I will send you the schedule, I apologize.
No problem. Not a worry.
Schedule, and we also have a schedule of meetings, um, just so that everyone knows kind of what we're discussing in each meeting, um, so today, we wanted to kind of update you on activities, um, we wanted to, uh, go through some of the changes that we've made in the departments, um, we are still working with the judges, we've had some scheduling challenges with them, we won't be able to show you revised courtroom or judge suite changes today, we will release those electronically as soon as we're able to kind of work through those with the judges.
And at what point do you need someone to make a decision on that?
Um.
So we can keep this process moving?
Well, May twenty-third, I believe, is our, when we are a hundred percent complete with design development, we would like to have it by then, um, and we'll work hard to kind of, over the next couple of weeks, you know, meet with them, I understand, we were planning to meet with Judge Smith today, I understand he's out sick, so, we're trying to get this scheduled as quickly as we can, um, we also wanted to talk about the windows, and then Whitney is going to walk you through some interior selections, so, um, we, uh, we have had a young man, he's an intern architect in, in our office, his name is Tyler Pollard, you might have seen him going around the courthouse, taking measurements, et cetera, um, we've been scheduling him through Scott Schnare, just to let him know when Tyler's gonna be in the office, if, if we need to let other folks know, you know, let, let us know, we, we've just been notifying, you know, maintenance department, so. Um, he will be out tomorrow, um, and then, we also will be releasing just a progress set today, so, we'll have, you know, departmental updates, casework elevation, things like that, um, we'll release the interior op- finish options, so all of that, will, everyone, we'll give you a digital copy. Wouldn't be a meeting without technical difference.
You can have just one of those.
Um, what they're trying to pull up is what you all have the hard copies of, um, so what I did for the interiors was picked two different kind of color palettes.
I'm worried, ask you to stand as close to the podium as you can, just, I'm not sure who's viewing at home, so, just so they can hear you, thank you.
Okay, so, two different color palettes, um, trying to keep with the, thank you, the, uh, neoclassical, just overall aesthetic of the inside, whenever you first walk in, that, that grand foyer type, uh, moment that you have, especially in the courtrooms, um, you'll see, you'll see at some point, uh, the rich color palette, more warmer tones, some tracery that reflects the, the timeframe that it was built, and then, I've also got just a couple of options for different restroom tile layouts, depending on personal preference, then there's also a. You'd like to, they're, they're not. They're not light. Um, just be careful putting them on a laminate, especially those tiles, I don't want it to scratch that. It'll make more sense once they, once they, uh, get the samples passed out, but then there's the, a cooler blue palette that, if the rust and the warm colors are a little bit too much, um, but still keeps with the, yeah, still keeps with the, yes, the same color palette that we're kind of going with.
You can just set them up on the chair, or whatever you wanna do, yeah.
Those are both within.
Matches Don's outfit. You blend right in?
So the, the two that she's got out there, those are a part of that warmer palette, that first group, um, and you can see on, I believe it's page four. And you can see on, I believe it's page four, page three, page four, kind of a room scene, so you can get a better picture of what those different designs would look like going throughout. I know it's important to keep a texture on there, to keep visible dirt minimal. I don't know exactly, oh, that one doesn't go, Rebecca. I don't know exactly what kind of things you got going on in your courtrooms, but that should hide any, any super visible disruption to it. We don't have the blue. Those did not come in in time, but the... There's tile in there. Really, the thought was keep the courtrooms with those patterned and grander gestured colors and finishes, and then have the option of the different departments to pick whether or not they wanted to go with the warmer kind of classical coloring group or move more modern. I don't know if departments really have a preference, but especially being seen to the public.
Or we got, or I guess we got one here. Lauren, not, yeah, depends what the answer is.
I personally would just prefer like...
And that would be something, that would be something that you would have the option to, so there's like a, actually you can... There's a... There would be an all over accent color, which would be either your cream or beige or a light gray. And then depending on if, which one of those you pick, if you want an accent wall in your office, you can have an accent wall in your office from one of four different accent colors. So it gives them kind of individuality, thank you, for their space, but also keeps the whole building sort of uniformed.
Is that, because ideally, I mean, just speaking on behalf of myself, we obviously are building this courthouse that's going to house dozens of office holders over the next hundred years. So the opinions and the desires of the existing office holders are very important. Ultimately, the commissioners have to look at, you know, Davies County in its entirety. So we definitely want consistency through the courtrooms, or through the courtrooms, through all the departments. So if we can give them some individuality, great, as long as it doesn't make it too blotchy, if that makes sense, you know?
Yep. I think with these two options, that would, that would fall into...
I just want to caution to, you know, start painting everything beige, because that's what happened to this building.
I recall.
You guys remember walking through this building? Everything got painted beige. Door jams, walls. It just looked like a model. The image is terrible. So just want to caution you guys on that too, just make sure we have accents somewhere.
Sure.
Whether it's in the door trims or something, yeah.
Yep. Yeah, I'm not sure what goes where, so I've got them laid out. Yeah, I can just clear out my stuff off that front and then...
I think a blue, blues would be appropriate for a courtroom myself, but red's my favorite color, so.
And you realize our wives have not asked our opinion in about twenty-five years on interior decorating. And there's good, there's good reason why. At least mine hasn't. These two may be...
I get a little bit of say-so every once in a while, not very often.
More you talk about accent colors, you might be the guy to look at this.
Easy. It's slick, we don't want it.
Yeah, we don't want the slick one. And I noticed there's no price tags on any of these samples. Yeah, it's real funny.
Within that range.
Have you done that already?
I've not spoken.
All right, that's fine. As long as at some point, we don't want to show some really cool stuff and then we, then it's four hundred dollars, that's worth it to build it, yeah.
I like what I'm seeing up here.
You like it?
I do. I think it will represent the courthouse the way it's built over there, the golds and the natural tones. The tile they picked out will kind of represent courthouse.
Okay, so where are we at?
We're gonna try emailing. We can't get in.
Is that, is that just to show this on the?
No, no, I've got floor plans.
No, we were gonna go through the changes that we've made in the floor plans and the casework, things like that. So you've got an update of where we are with departments. We will meet with the departments the week after next, you know, just to, you know, one last time, go through everything. We picked everything up that we talked about, et cetera.
While you guys do that, I'm gonna go ahead and entertain a motion to per payroll and claims, and we'll go and get these signed while we sit.
A moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, I'm in favor.
Aye.
The motion passes three zero.
Thank you.
And you know the meeting's gone too long.
Wearing the pins up.
Yeah. Ladies, is there anything we can help you out on as we're...
She's trying to pull up the plans.
Okay, can we print them off perhaps? Can you email them?
I could email them, so.
Can we?
There you go.
There we go.
So there's another one that's...
Mr. Spillman's got places to be. He can't just sit here. He can't just sit here.
Can we open the updated floor plans? It says updated floor plans in that.
One good one.
Why, almost no one sits directly in front of me.
There we go, perfect. All right, so I just wanted to share with you the updated floor plans. So we have the basement where we've returned the secure entry to the side. Not much more has changed on the bottom. We are looking at the existing restrooms to renovate those, so those are still under consideration on how we're gonna do that exactly. Other than that, it pretty much remained the same. If you want to go to the next floor. So here we have the probation area in the turquoise color. Most of that has basically remained the same. We have worked through casework a little bit with her, so I'll show you that in just a minute. Again, we haven't touched the judge's side yet. Other than her comment, the judge's chambers are now identical in square footage or pretty close to being identical.
In that area then.
Whose?
You guys took the restroom out, right? Where the veterans office was.
Help me with where the veterans office was.
This is back in the corner.
Oh, this is third floor, okay, sorry, sorry.
Oh, did it get mixed up? Okay, yep, it did get mixed up. So actually, the next one down would be the second floor, sorry about that. I confused you. All right, second floor, we've got...
Laura, can we make that full screen? I'm not sure if we need all that on the right. Okay, that's fine.
Slow on the process.
It's fine if we can't. Okay, well, let's just go and pull it back up like you had it.
If you go over to that up and down bar, you might get an arrow that you can expand. Well, okay. All right, so the second floor, sorry about skipping that. So we have the clerk. I always go, if you go down, sorry, those floor plans should be flipped. So that's the second floor. You see in the peach color is the clerk area. I was hoping, we might be able to see it on the other PDF a little bit better, but we've worked with her on the equipment that needs to remain, got the sizes, placed them on the plans, so we're able to actually see those. We've reworked the election area, which we can see, I think, a little bit better on the other PDF. And then, again, the judge's area hasn't changed, so if you want to switch over to that other PDF, you might be able to...
Just real quick here, if we can make just a note, we don't have to really talk too in depth, but when we changed that jury room because of the domino effects of changing some other stuff, and that we got that rectangle table in there, the jury room got much larger. But my main concern is on the actual jury table, if it actually looks in those dimensions, and something's in the center of that table, you're not even gonna be able to reach it. So I just want to make sure that we just make a note of that as we go through this process, because I mean, it's gotta be almost a ten foot.
Well, you can do, so we can look at it as, I think right now, we have it modeled as one big table. We could always do it as more of a donut shape with an access in the middle that you could have somebody stand in the middle, pass things out.
It's just one of those little details that could get dropped, but one solid table, I don't think would be practical.
Absolutely.
Anyway, all right, thank you.
These are still kind of working in progress, but these are what we came up with after our last meeting with the department. So what we're seeing right now on the screen is probation. As you can see, we've kind of worked through casework with her on what we think the department needs would be. So you'll see transaction windows in those lobby areas. Got like a small kitchenette in the conference room. And then we have a work, drug work, drug test work area, and then some areas for files. And this plan might be a little bit better to see some of the clerk spaces. So you can kind of see, we've worked with, up here, you can see the dotted spaces where we've worked with the size of her equipment that needs to remain. We've reworked the election area to allow for six election voting stations during, I guess, early election mostly. Because we're using presidential. And then it will have a wall there with a entire work area down below to the south side of that. Make more sense to be like open shelving and things like that for equipment, so we're still working through those. But we were able to get casework or some kind of shelving across the entire left side of that plan, which we think will help greatly with some of her storage needs.
Can I say one quick thing? I just wanted to say I'm very happy with these ladies. They've heard everything that I've said and really worked well with me, and I appreciate that. I'm very happy with the plan. I only have one small concern, and I do have a way that we can easily fix it. If you can see there in the center, there are eight girls in that one office. The girls that are gonna be on the bottom are not gonna be able to really see the counter because of the angle of that. So I'm just kind of wondering if there's a way to put a camera like facing down in the lobby with a big TV up above the check areas, so that those girls can all see if there's someone out there waiting to be held.
Should be a problem.
Okay, then that'll fix that problem. I'm very happy with it.
We've got cameras anyhow, and Dale Hoover's running, the cameras can give you access to that, I'm sure.
Yeah, if we can just get like a live feed so they can see if there's...
Or have it on your desktop or whatever.
Okay, thank you.
Presumably come, it'll presumably come back up.
Commissioner Arnold, what do you, what should we do there?
Playing for the future.
Yeah, we're playing for the future, yeah.
That's why I think we're sort of stuck, you know, because we're...
We need to plan for that.
They'll still use the room.
The session's not dead yet, so I mean, it could take...
It may not be this year, it could be next year, but it will come in time.
Be two years from now, yeah.
It's gonna take, this is gonna be another year or two years anyhow.
Yeah, I guess we stick the referee in there.
In the window picture.
That's a good point, because...
The only other thing, if there's one to use, side entrance is the main entrance. Do we need to do something outside or a awning of some sort? To me, it should look more like an entrance than just a side door if that's gonna be the main.
At one time, six, seven, eight years ago, there is, RQAW does have drawings for a glass cover top on over that whole piece out there.
I think we should look at it.
I think Eric's probably still got that.
Yeah, maybe that's an add-on we consider.
Maybe an option, alternate, yeah.
Alternate, yeah.
And we have kind of internally discussed maybe ways to dress up that front entrance, whether it's changing out the railing. We talked about that. We talked about possibly doing some kind of limestone wall to kind of make it look a little bit more intentional. So we've kind of discussed on ways to dress it up a little bit, even if you don't do like an addition off that side.
Yeah, I'd like to see what we've done in the past, and then if there's some more current options, it'd be good to look at.
Right, Ron, maybe you were just talking maybe like just a covered roof or something, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, actually, an addition, but...
Just to make it more usable.
Usable, it's not, you know, get out of the weather or whatever to get down, down the ramp or whatever.
Then the last kind of point of topic that we wanted to bring up is the windows conversation.
Yeah, so a year and a half ago, maybe, we had, approximately, there was a sample window that was installed. We checked with Delaware Glass because I know Scott was saying, hey, there's some trim that's coming off, came off of this window. So we've checked back in with them, and what they did, so that window has been approved by DNR, so it's historically approved. One of the things I understand that you did in order to get the correct profile was to do a two-piece snap trim that would then be mechanically fastened with concealed fasteners. You have to have a thousand pound minimum order to get that. And we were just doing a sample mock-up. So what they did is they used a U-channel, which was meant to be temporary. And so that is the reason for trim coming off, because it hasn't been properly fastened at all, et cetera.
I remember them telling us that at the time.
Yeah, okay, okay. So we, well, we wanted to chase that down and make sure we didn't have any issues with the window that we're aware of. So I think after a lot of research there, we feel comfortable. So I think, you know, we, there's also been some talk about adding storm windows to the exterior. In this case, we believe that you would need to refurbish the windows. They're, you know, in a condition that they really need to be, you know, some of them... you know, in, in a condition that they really need to be, you know, some of them are a little bit crooked and, um, paint is, is wearing off, or et cetera, so.
You picked a good window there, cause there's a lot of them are a lot worse than that one.
I was, I was trying to pick one of the ones that was not so good, so.
I've walked around that building, seen about every window in there, and they're all that shape or worse, and there's, there is a few of them that's better shaped than that, but they're deteriorated to the point that need, they need to be replaced. And for me, to put a, either a storm window on the inside or outside, we're trying to make this a modern building, right, and still have the aesthetics of an old building.
Yeah.
And I don't see, I, to me, that just looks like you haphazardly just built something in there because you wanted to make it work. I'd prefer the window come out and try to go with a more modern window that's got R-value and everything else in it.
But you will, in this day and age, you'll get a really good coefficient U-value, and, you know, when we work with our mechanical engineers in-house, a lot of times, we'll look at the U-value, the shading coefficient of the glass, and we may spend a little bit more in windows in that U-value in order to get the, decrease the capacity that we need, and it ultimately results in a saving. So we, we kind of check that in-house, just to figure that out. Um, so I think our recommendation would be to provide new windows, just based on what we've seen.
Be my recommendation to, to replace the windows, but I know whenever, I tried to move forward with this a few years ago with those windows, of course, the building hadn't been remodeled, and we was gonna put stationary windows in there. That's still what you guys would prefer to do, put a stationary window or an operating window, or what?
From, uh, for, for our opinion, it is best to go with a non-operable window.
Yeah.
It, our mechanical engineers kind of cringe at the thought of operable windows, because it's hard to control the building climate when you have people opening windows and whatnot. Um, also, there's some security concerns with operable windows, um, so we would prefer to go with the non-operable window. We are still looking at the original window that we already have approved through DNR, um, knowing that the issues that we thought might, might be an issue are not actually, um, a long-term issue, since we can get a permanent, um, adherer fix. So, um, I think our recommendation would be going with a non-operable window unless we get direction to look otherwise.
That would be my recommendation.
On, on the school buildings, we, non-operable and kind of regretted it in some circumstances, talked about, well, in each room, put one operable window. Too late to do that, but there is a disadvantage to not having an operable. Something takes place within the building and within that room that you need to change.
Um, yeah, it comes down to, part of it comes down to operationally, you know, how you want to proceed, right? So either, you know, you've got, um, zones, thermostat zones, and I, I, you know, we'll need our mechanical engineer to sort of help us understand, they'll do a diagram that shows how many zones you're gonna have, right? But typically, you'll have a zone that's thermostatically controlled. Um, I think the issue our mechanical guys tell us is just if you have folks that are opening windows in a zone, and you'll end up with some people that are hot, and some that are cold, and some that leave the windows open in winter, and so it's, yeah.
There's another side to that story, too.
Yeah.
Are you thinking more of a safety standpoint?
Not only safety, but sometimes there's things that go on in those rooms that you need some fresh air. Immediately.
I mean, we have all non-operable windows in this building, right?
Yeah.
And in our, our headquarters, we have all non-operable windows, so I'd be more inclined to have non-operable windows, cause we're gonna have a whole new HVAC system in there.
You will.
So, yeah, that'd probably be more, more inclined, excuse me, to take your advice and just be non-operable throughout.
All right, well, we will proceed ahead.
We don't have to make that decision today, but as we, we need to see, we need to see the price of the windows and let the department heads provide any feedback, but it's, all of our existing department heads used to be over there, used to have operable windows, and maybe it'd be nice occasionally to have it here, but it's not a complaint that I hear very often in this building, that you can't open your windows.
You know, I can, I can see that if you're in the lowest level and you've got the radiators on and you're next to the boiler, et cetera, that you might get a little bit toasty. Um, so I, I would guess that there might be an issue currently with the system, just, you know, I, I don't know, but we hear that a lot.
Yeah, the current system over is, it's definitely, with the radiator system, you got hot spots, yeah.
That's, yeah, absolutely, um.
I know this building here, south-facing offices, that has the curtain walls in their office, it's, it, the temperature controls outside that room, and those offices get warm up with the sun coming in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's exactly right.
And initially, it'll be fine, it's a new system, it's not always gonna be a new system.
True, yeah, very true.
What we ran into the school system, or.
Oh, yeah.
The personnel really wasn't operating the system as it was designed.
Yeah.
And so there's a lot of variables in there that sometimes there's gonna be people in those rooms that's just gonna wish they could open a window, either it's too hot or it's too cold, and.
Yeah.
Nice to have that option, but if the experts and counterparts say no, then that's fine.
Well, we will.
I'm just bringing it up for discussion.
Yeah, we'll talk with our mechanical engineers. Well, we'll talk with our mechanical engineers for the project, and, you know, tell them that, you know, what about having at least one window that's operable, et cetera, so we'll, we'll speak with them as well. Um, and we'll ask our mom for pricing, uh, so that you can make a decision. I think our goal would be to have a decision within the next month if possible, just so that by the time we conclude the design development phase, that decision is made, and we can document whatever we decide in CD phase.
It does, does it seem like, um, there's kind of a consensus to do new windows, though? Whether operable or non-operable?
By view, it has to be done.
So that helps us check one, one box.
Yeah, that's one box checked, yeah.
Oh, it depends on the price, but, yeah, I mean, theoretically, if it's the same price.
Those windows, the, the price a few years ago, I know that everything's went up, they weren't outrageous. Actually, they came down from the very first quote that we had.
Yeah, and, and we feel like, even if you were to do the storm windows, it's, it's not going to necessarily be a cheap option, because we still think that they would need to be refurbished, so you're removing a window, refurbishing and putting it back, and then putting a storm window on top of it.
Right.
So there's probably significant labor costs.
Delaware Glass did have, I mean, if you take those things out to refurbish them, Delaware, Delaware Glass had a fairly hard time removing those windows.
Yeah.
Without breaking them.
So to take them apart without tearing them up is gonna be about near impossible.
Um, that is everything that I have on my agenda.
Hey, great, any questions, gentlemen?
I don't think so, I like the color palettes, I like the, it's like everything would fit in the courthouse over there, so.
Yeah. Yeah, let us know if you start having time constraints regarding your timeline, and, um, you know, people are not, are being non-responsive, I mean, we wanna include everyone who wants to be included, but, you know, we can't babysit anybody at the same time, so, um, if you see you get to a point where you need help from us to kind of let folks know when the deadline is to provide feedback.
Okay.
On the interior side, you did mention it, is there anything that we wanna rule out completely, or are we good with everything we see, so that we can kind of go from there?
Cause you don't have the blue, so you have an option of blues for the courtroom, too?
The blues.
Didn't come in, right? There's those two, yeah. Yeah, no, it's, I can see, I'm just making sure that was an option, yeah.
With the orange and the yellow and the blue options, I think that all of it would go cohesively together if, for some reason, a department was totally against, you know, the beige and the orange and the yellow, they wanted to go with that more modern, softer, cooler look. Um, you know, in the atrium, there's that really, really distinct stained glass that's got orange, yellow, blue, so, I mean, it's, it's all, it could all work harmoniously together, it wouldn't necessarily have to be, oh, the entire courthouse is gonna be blue and gray, or vice versa.
Yeah, and, and obviously, it could be a completely different tile than we have out here in the foyer, um, but again, this foyer, when it gets wet, it's just a death trap, I mean, literally, so I just wanna make sure that the surface of any of this type of material, um, when it's wet, that it's.
I think we're going to use something that's either a Huga tile or something similar in the security area, so, and in the vestibule, so that when you go in and then you go through security, you're, you know, if it's wet, that will help take care of that issue.
Well, I'm just talking throughout, throughout, cause it doesn't matter where you step on this foyer, you're in the bathroom.
Oh, oh, okay.
The, the, the type of tile is, is just extremely slick, no matter where.
Each flooring product will have a slip resistance to it, a number, and so we'll take a look at that.
Yeah.
That will, to make sure that.
We'll compare it to what's out here and then better.
Yeah.
Cause that is, yeah.
Certain times. If they mop, or if you come in here and somebody drops some water or something, it gets very slick.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, do we have anything from the audience? Anything, gentlemen, else? If not, an entertaining a motion to adjourn?
Same.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.